Well, it's a hockey game night, that's why.
I know.
We're live.
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Hello, everybody. Thank you. For those of you who are here, I see we have seven attendees. We have only one question. It's from Mina, who is Anthony Housefather's, not sure the official title, but works with Anthony Housefather. And she's attending, so she wants to know if the meeting has started. As of now, the meeting has started. And that concludes our questions, and we'll move right on with the public question. Sorry, we just had the public question period. Adoption of the agenda, and I believe councillor Goldwax would like to add an item to the agenda. Councillor Goldwax?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we're going to add item 8.21. It's a request to authorize a minor exemption to zoning by law number 1001-2 for detached single-family home located at 240 Dufferin Road. So their request for minor exemption.
Okay, thank you. Would someone second that, please?
Schaefer.
Councillor Schaefer, anyone opposed? No. So we're amending the agenda to add that item. Would someone please move adoption of the amended agenda?
Goldwax.
That councillor Goldwax, seconded by councillor Schaefer, I think. Anyone opposed? Okay, so we've adopted the agenda. Departmental monthly reports. Councillor Wigginsburg isn't here. I will just mention on her behalf, very briefly, the pool is going along splendidly for lap swims. We're now up to three people, well, nine people at a time for each hour from six. For free swim, a public swim, it's a maximum of 63 people. These are Quebec rules. And the quadrants are gone, and all that is working well. The day camp started, we're in week two of the day camp. And they also use the pool during certain hours. So everything is going well. We're watching Quebec rules. If they loosen it further for the pool, we'll make adjustments. If they loosen things for public events, like our concert series that was very popular, we will have an abbreviated concert series just as soon as they allow enough people. And Hampstead Day is now scheduled for probably end of August, beginning of September, sometime like that, again, subject to Quebec rules. So everything is moving along very, very well. Sports, soccer, snake golf, everything, everything is going well as far as community services goes. And that's my very brief report. That brings us to councillor Edinburgh in finance.
Okay, so just to give you a quick update, we got our 2020 financial statements have been finalized. We had a $3 million surplus, which you have to take with a bit of grain of salt, because a million of that was a federal COVID grant to offset our COVID-related costs. Another million of that was our budget line for PTI capital expenses. But because it's only, from an accounting point of view, the PTI is not accounted for in 2020, it's accounted for in 2021, so it looks like it's a surplus, but in fact, it's budgeted. So the 3 million surplus comes down to about a million of surplus. And then the major variances that led to that million dollars were a $134,000 grant from Montreal to offset COVID costs, $43,000 interest arrears, which, an increase of $43,000 in interest arrears, which is not a good thing. It means our people were kind of falling back on their ability to pay. There was a positive of $195,000 in transfer taxes, so that was due to increased property values. And there was there was a big decrease in revenue and a likewise decrease in expenses with regards to CSR. Overall, the net benefit to the town was about $27,000 or so, because there was about $348,000 of decreased revenue because of COVID. So it was a particularly strange year, but overall, I think we've managed to get through it rather well. And I think the in fact, actually, had we not gotten the COVID grants from the federal government, we would have actually wound up with a slight deficit. So that's the financials on that side. The permit fees year-to-date this year are up $72,000, up from $72,000 to $128,000. So we still have a lot of new construction going on in town, higher than previous years. Unfortunately, with COVID kind of waning now, overtime has shot back up to pre-pandemic levels. So in 2020, our overtime was very low, but they've actually shot back up to like 2017 levels, as high as that. Park Fund after a 2020 PTI is a healthy $650,000, and we expect a further $400,000. So after everything's said and done with PTI, with the spending on the tennis courts and the lights and redoing everything, we're still going to wind up with about a million dollars at the end of this year in our park fund. And from finance point of view, we're looking at and we're working on trying to get a new grant, a federal grant for two-thirds of a possible CSR building project. So we're working on that. And then just an update on the Public Works Yard reorganization project that we're doing. The property was listed, the part of the CS, of the Public Works Yard was listed on the SEAO. It was, we gave it 30 days, but then in the process, we added another week, so it's going to go. The SEAO process is open until the third week of July, at which point we'll know what the final bid is on that property. The second part of that project is we're working with an architect and with staff to design the new Public Works building, and we hope to be able to be in a position to present to council, hopefully, within the next week or two, a a proposal of the building and have hard costs as well. So, I mean, specific costs or hard costs as well, so we'll know exactly what the costs are, and then council can discuss and move forward. And that's about it for finance and Public Works Yard Reorg.
Thank you very much, councillor Alfassi, tennis.
And strategic development, Mr. Mayor, just to remind you.
Yes, absolutely.
And actually, let's start with strategic development on short commentary. We, at the last meeting, there was a motion proposed by the mayor about, you know, the 10 stories, and I figured this is an item for strategic development, just the same. And I wish and I pray that the mayor would, you know, find a peaceful way to agree with most councillors to eight stories rather than 10 stories. I know I had a short discussion with the mayor earlier. He's still adamant and and sticking to his opinion of 10 stories is his only option. But I hope we will come to an agreement in council in one voice, so we all can agree to eight stories, possibly with a one-floor mezzanine on top, and we can proceed to some kind of new era in Coates and Luke Road, a new era in council altogether. So that on the strategic development and on tennis. Tennis this year is going actually very, very well. We have a very good season so far, except last Wednesday, actually. First time that the league was canceled because of a lot of rain. We had an outstanding so far season where the courts are very, very busy most of the days, except the dead hours, which are early, early afternoon hours. But other than that, we are very busy, and we also checked the possibility to allow a membership to non-resident, which we did open that option. And if I'm not mistaken, we got some extra members, not many, not to the, to the point that will affect playing time for our Hampstead residents. So on that front, it's going very well. This is actually after a very, very you know, unfortunate situation when we started the season with the controversy of losing one of the pros. So I continue from there and talk about the major investment that the town is going to is really investing on the tennis courts, where we are going to redo the entire courts, the whole irrigation of the courts, the entire lights will be all brand-new. So I can tell you guys that I can't wait for the 2022 season to get out there and play either daytime or nighttime, because it's going to be absolutely state-of-the-art courts. And if you want to have a little bit of a taste what it's going to look, just go to MRTC on Gray and Sherbrook in Westmount, the private club in Westmount. The same, I mean, the club there did exactly what we're going to do. They redid the entire courts, they put new lights. So if you want to see what it'll look next year, drive by Gray and Sherbrook and look at what they've done. So that being said, it's, we're on our way with the La Pelle d'Offre. We will probably know sometimes by the end of July, the, we will open the documents and we'll know the costs. I had a short discussion with our DG and from his information and from discussion with other DGs around the province, they see and experience material costs going higher. So probably the cost or the, what we estimated cost for us to do the courts might be somewhat higher, and I'm sure we will hear from our DG in the near future about about this item of material costs. That's about, that's about the tennis update that I can give you. And again, guys, if you have a chance, and if you guys never played, go out there to those courts and play for you, you might, you might enjoy, enjoy hitting some balls. And if anybody wants to help, you can call me. I'd be more than pleased to hit sometimes with anybody. So it's an open invitation, not only to the councillors, to all those who are on this call. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to you.
Thank you very much. And since you did happen to bring up my name on the Coates and Luke Road project, I do want to mention, you suggested that I should consider.
Bill, this feedback.
Yeah, I don't know why. Mike, I think, yeah, now you're okay.
Okay. So I did want to mention that councillor Alfassi suggested I should join the compromise with the councillors and be in favor of eight stories. All I have to say about that is that I have sworn in over the office many, many times, because I've been elected many times. And based on that, I do what is in the best interest of the residents of Hampstead, the majority of the residents of Hampstead. That's always what's motivated me. That's always what I do. I will have something in writing that people will be able to read in the not-too-distant future on this subject, but I will share with you, if we're talking about compromise, well, are we talking about a compromise with the tenants on Coates and Luke Road? Because if so, eight or 10 stories, people have to move out of their, of their apartments. In fact, even renovating the buildings at the current six stories, like for example, what's going on at the corner of Coates and Luke and Glenmore, all the tenants are gone. And if they choose to come back after the building's been renovated, they'll find the rents are much, much higher. The smaller building further down, also being redone, four stories or something like that. Again, all the tenants are gone. And as buildings continue to deteriorate, more and more are going to either be demolished and higher buildings will come, or there'll be internal renovations, or what the Gazette called "renovictions" in a two-page article in Saturday's Gazette. So there's no compromise with the tenants. There's no way to compromise with the tenants. The fact is, they're living in buildings that are 50 to 75 years old, they're deteriorating, and progress is going to happen. So if we're talking eight or 10 stories, makes no difference. If we're talking about no change whatsoever, and nobody on council wants no change, makes no difference. Tenants will have to move. That's just the reality. If we're talking about compromise with those 10 to 15 homes that will be impacted, should higher buildings go up on Coates and Luke Road, well, 10 to 15 homes is a very small minority, and I always answer to the majority. And if we're looking at the survey results, in my opinion, they're crystal clear, residents one, 10, or even more than 10 stories. I have proposed to councillors that if they still don't understand what I consider to be very clear survey results, well, why not have a ballot question? Why not have a separate little referendum at the time when people come out to vote? A lot of people come out to vote in Hampstead. And when they come out, they can have one extra piece of paper, and they can choose eight, nine, or 10 stories. That's it. And the councillors will have to commit that if they're re-elected, and I'll make the same commitment, if I'm re-elected, that we will go by whatever it shows. So we'll end up with eight stories, or nine stories, or 10 stories. I'm already compromising. I'm not saying we should have 11 or 12 stories. 10 is the highest I'd put on that question. And since I know of only one councillor who wants less than eight stories, maybe, I'm not sure, eight should be the lowest number. And we can throw a nine as a middle number as well. So I have proposed that. So far, no councillors have jumped up and down and told me, oh, yes, that's a great idea. Let's get this settled once and for all. But I have made that proposal. Let's see if the councillors come around and consider doing that. I think that's, I mean, I know what the results are going to be. It'll be no surprise to me. But let's see if the councillors want to get this settled once and for all. That's something I can do. Okay, moving along.
I, I'm sorry. I mean, I didn't want to interrupt you, because the more you talk, the more you put yourself in a corner. So it's, you know, to your own detriment when you just talk unscripted. But I implore all residents on Coates and Luke Road, all voters, listen to what the mayor just said. Listen to every word that he just said. There is no compromise. He doesn't care whether your building goes under renovations, whether it's sold, six stories, four stories, eight stories, 10 stories, 12 stories. He doesn't care about you. Vote. That's terrible leadership. That is not how you should be governing a city. That is not how you respect your residents. That is not how you take care of your citizens. I'm, I can't believe that you're running a city right now. It's unfathomable to me.
Okay, thank you, councillor Buttoning, but I must say, I feel exactly the opposite. I think that it's incumbent upon all of us, councillors and mayor, to listen to the people. Not, not to a small minority, but to everybody, the majority.
Bill, Mr. Mayor, you have hundreds of residents that live on Coates and Luke Road, some in condos, some in apartment buildings, hundreds of residents. Your city has 6,900 and something residents, hundreds of them live on Coates and Luke Road, a huge, huge proportion of your population. You just don't care about them. But they're still your citizens. Yes, you can say you care about them, you've done more for them than anybody else, but the reality is, is you don't care about them. Listen to what you just said. That's not a mayor standing up and protecting their citizens. That's a mayor standing up, arms locked with developers, saying money, money, money. It's terrible.
Councillor Buttoning, you can try to put words in my mouth, but that's not what I said. And the tenants on Coates and Luke Road, I trust, are just as bright as everybody else and can fully understand what I said. I said, whether you have eight stories, or 10 stories, or six stories, or renovation, any of them, you have to move. That's it. That's the reality. And I believe the tenants on Coates and Luke Road know that. As for condos.
There's so much more complexity to that relationship. There's so much more that you can do with your powers as a representative of people. These are people's lives. You're talking about the Gazette Saturday morning. Did you happen to see a massive front-page spread about the fact that there's not enough affordable housing in the city? Did you not listen to residents in the town hall that were crying to you about the fact that there's nowhere for them to live? It's in your, it's in your power as the mayor, it's in your power as the mayor to create a positive relationship, a symbiotic situation where maybe you will have developments, maybe you will have renovations, but maybe you'll also take into account and protect your residents. This is crazy what I'm hearing.
Councillor Buttoning, all you're doing is political grandstanding. I have no patience for that. I'm telling you the truth.
I'm the least political person here. I don't have an ego. I don't care about being elected. I care about standing up for the people and doing the right thing. I'm the least political person here, the least.
You're not standing up for the people at all. You're ignoring the vast majority of residents in the town who would like to upzone, who would like all the good things that will come, including lower tax increases, including higher home values, who want all these things, and you're ignoring them, and you're coming.
It's not ignoring, it's not a black-and-white situation. It's not yes or no. It's finding a middle ground. It's finding a middle ground.
Can I interfere for one second, Mr. Mayor?
No, no, no.
You have six councillors, and you have one mayor, and you have five, five votes of the councillor that they all tell you of eight stories.
You will get the floor when I give you the floor. These meetings are going to be run the way they're supposed to be run. So you can put up your hand, and I'll be happy to let you talk when I finish responding to councillor Buttoning. Thank you very much. Now, again, I'm sorry, but telling the truth about what happens is not saying I don't care about residents. As you self-mentioned, I've helped numerous residents on Coates and Luke Road on every issue that's come to my attention, dealing with landlords, a handicapped person because of a big cement block she couldn't get out of her apartment building, and on and on and on. I don't have to justify it. You can go onto my campaign website and see testimonials from residents. The point I'm making is that eight or 10 stories, or even six-story renovations, they all result in residents leaving. Now councillor Buttoning, if you want to have more affordable housing for the people who who can't afford these new higher rents, well, make a proposal about what Hampstead should do about affordable housing. Not tonight. Think about it. Write something up. Tell us what your proposal is. But right now, as far as I'm concerned, when you have a bigger supply of apartments and we're leaving part of Coates and Luke Road untouched, we're not talking about upzoning between Duffin and Stratford, where there are quite a large number of apartment units. And some of those people are going to move into the new units that become available, and that frees up more units in the older, more affordable buildings, and puts downward pressure on their rents. So this too is something that I have thought about and everybody else should think about. These developments are good for the residents on Coates and Luke Road. They are good for everybody in the town, pretty much. A few exceptions maybe, but most people it's good for. And I, again, don't understand why the councillors don't want to have a question once and for all when people come out to vote. When we will get thousands, we usually get about 2,500 people coming out to vote, more than that, in fact. And when they come out and vote, they can also simply say.
Bill, let me, let me, let me be, let me be clear here. I'm not, I'm not against development, as I've said many times, as everybody's said many times. The issue is how you portray the situation. Your job is being a mayor. Your job is to be a leader. You're not a leader right now. And as councillor Alfassi said, I don't know if you have the pulse of the community when everybody voted against your resolution. You might have, you know, all these testimonials from citizens that live on Coates and Luke Road on your website, but you have no testimonials from your colleagues on council. So what does that say about your leadership and about your creativity to foster a positive work environment, to come to solutions? You need to be in a leadership position and actively be a leader. So it's so frustrating to hear the same rhetoric over and over and over again. There's so much more that can be done. It's such an all-encompassing situation. And to answer your question, I am against having a referendum tied to the election. With all due respect, you brought this forward. There was a register and a referendum. It failed. The population came out to vote and it was shut down. We then spent money on a BC2 report, an urban planning study, that recommended six to eight stories. We then went out and we got a traffic study, no change to traffic. We then went out and got an Altus economic study, where the ROI on a six-story building was highest. Then we went out and we actually had a survey. The Legere poll, which actually indicated 35% of the city didn't want change, and that 59%, if you want to play math, said eight stories and less. Now you're proposing a 10-story resolution where five out of the six people on council voted against it. At a certain point, do you say everybody else is out to lunch, or are you?
Well, I'm glad you brought up the subject of leadership, because there are some people who would much rather keep this issue, this controversial issue, out of the election. It has been suggested to me by more than one person that, Bill, don't do this. Don't get a controversial issue there. Be quiet. Wait till you're re-elected. Then you can spring it on the unsuspecting masses. That's not what a leader does. That's not what I do. What I do is I push what I believe is in the best interest of the residents of Hampstead. And I'm very convinced that the vast majority of residents of Hampstead agree with me. I think the survey results show that as well. You mentioned 59% wanting eight or less stories. That's interesting. If you really believe it, then why can't we have a question when people come to vote? Eight, nine, or 10?
Because I think that's running.
If 59% really want eight or less, well, you guys will get the eight that you want. Now, please, don't tell me that leadership is based on getting the councillors on board. No. Leadership is doing what is in the best interest of the residents of this town. And that is what all the councillors should be doing, and I'm very sorry that too many of them are absolutely not, which is unfortunate. Now can we move on, please? Thank you.
For the record, I'm sorry, because I just want to say one last thing. That tying the election to a referendum question is not fair to the town. There's a lot more that's involved in running the city, a lot more, as you're well aware. There's so many other factors that go into everything that's been done up to this point in time to say that an election is only about one issue. There's so much more that's going on in the city besides one factor.
I invite you to visit my campaign website, and you will see I am not running on one issue. Go ahead and spend some time on my website, and you will see I talk about my 16-year track record. I talk about numerous things. And I talk about my vision for a new era for Hampstead. That's what I do on my website. Visit it, read it. I certainly am not a one-issue candidate. And having a referendum at the same time as you have a vote is simply a way to move forward, because I do understand the survey results. I do speak to people. I do know what the pulse of the residents are.
How is it that you know more than all of us?
Well, we're going to find, in four months, there's an election. We'll find out whether I know or I don't know. So there's no point in talking hypothetically. Let's find out. Let's find out. Okay, now.
Can I just say one thing? I'm reading a book by Mark Carney, who is the former governor general, governor of the Bank of Canada, and probably the only guy in the world who is also became the governor of the Bank of England, so two central banks. And it's entitled Values. And what he writes about is that you have to be able to differentiate in government between value and values. Value being money. And I'm thinking, Coates and Luke Road, you go to 10 stories, you're going to get more money. No problem, for sure. Nobody disagrees with you. The problem is, it doesn't mesh with what I think our values should be. You have to balance value and values. You have to balance value and values. Our values are not to disregard the people who are living on Coates and Luke Road and our values should not be to disregard the people and the impact on the lives of the people living along Queen Mary and Cressy. And that's where I think we differ. It's not just about the dollar value. It's about values and we have to balance the two. Can't be one or the other alone. It's got to be a mesh. That's all. It's a great book. I suggest anybody read it. This guy is really excellent.
Okay, it's great and I agree with values and I agree that we must consider the residents on Coates and Luke Road, but I think I've explained why it really makes no difference whether you got eight, ten stories for the residents on Coates and Luke Road. And if people don't get it, I'm not going to keep repeating it. I'll have something in writing in the near future. You can read that instead. Okay, moving on, uh, we come to councillor Goldwax and uh, various portfolios.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you everyone. I will just say that I, 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 I'm a little bit shocked uh, because councillor Alfassi brought up something. And with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, you responded back justifying your campaign, your, your uh, track record, your this, your that. Um, I didn't realize that town, that town council meetings become election platforms where you can talk about Visima website, Visima website and go see what I've been doing. I didn't realize that we're allowed to do this because I didn't think we want to be grandstanding and talking about their election campaign. Um, the, the other thing is while um, I don't agree as well that we should have a, a, a referendum question or any question tied to a general election in a municipal, in a municipal election. It reminds me what happens in the States when people say, vote for Joe Smith and vote no on proposition thirteen or vote yes on proposition thirteen. Sorry. Uh, it's confusing enough for most people because am I voting for Joe or am I voting for the proposition? I like Joe, but I don't like his proposition. So it puts people in a bind because people can choose one or the other. And the thing is, one person, whether it's mayor or councillor, is not being elected or chosen on one item. They are being elected on multiple items. By tying it to a single question referendum, vote for Joe Blow and do you vote for ten stories or more? Otherwise, you're not going to vote for Joe Blow. You're shooting yourself in the foot. People will be shooting themselves in the foot and we, we as a council, whoever is of us who are the, we know five of us are, are, are returning or looking to return on council. Uh, I know that one person is, is moving and we understand that. The thing is that when you talk about your track record, Mr. Mayor, a hundred percent in comparison to your current candidate who has put his name forward, you are talking about your track record as mayor. However, your track record or mayor has been established and created and put majority, majority by and part of your support from your council of us being there either eight, twelve or fifteen, sixteen years working together with you. So I, when you talk about your track record, I will say, without being selfish, it's our track record. It's all of our track record. So I'm putting that out there first of all. Um, and I, and I just, I, I, I'm just putting that out there. We have to listen. Every resident, you keep on saying the vast majority want uh, ten stories or higher. I don't know my numbers. Vast majority is not fifty-nine and sixty, sixty odd percent saying no to ten stories. That's not vast majority. So. With that being said, not making this an election, we're making a meeting and it's a HABs game going on. And in fairness, everyone else, we want to move on with our reports. We have over twenty odd items just in the room planning that we have to talk about. So uh, Public Works, which is quite important, I have a few portfolios of Public Works and I have, um, and I have um, uh, um, IT. Um, we had a water, one water main break that appeared on Netherwood Crescent. That water main was found in part and parcel due to work being done by Bell. They did not cause the work, but as they were digging their, their holes for the Bell five lines, they discovered water pooling. And it turned out there was a, a small leak from a, from a water pipe which was excavated and repaired. There was no damage to their properties and it worked out perfectly because uh, it wasn't a leak that was sprung in the middle of winter or flooding anywhere. So I'm happy about that. We've had two water main valve replacements being done. One on the corner of Merton and Randville and the other one on Ferncroft and Guffrin. These are important. Uh, our, our engineer has flagged that there are many water valves. Uh, the, these are what we use to keep the, the water when there is a water main break. Are old and need servicing and the problem is if we can't turn them off, water will keep on running, so we need to get those addressed. So I thank Public Works for being on top of that. I will also say that I'm happy to report that all of the perennials and annuals have been planted as of June twenty-fourth. So thank you to the Public Works Blue Team and Green Team for getting everything done by June twenty-fourth. Um, uh, we'll talk about, uh, for anybody living on a call on the north side of Fleet. Uh, I've been noticing a lot of work being done on by excavators and, and these telecon trucks. This is for some people who participate in the, in the town hall meetings. Uh, this is Bell Five. So there's a contractor doing the work on behalf of Bell Five, running Bell Five uh, control boxes and access points on everyone's front lawn. Um, these are whether you have Bell Five or not, these are going to be installed at the front of your property, irrespective if you have Bell or Videotron. And then if you do want Bell, then they will be running a line from the Bell box, the, which, which I will show you in a, in a second what it basically looks like. Uh, sorry. It looks like this. So this is, I'm showing everyone, this is a Bell box. That's one of the larger ones. And I will tell you that the, the city um, does um, uh, require or our contractors are required to put everything back to normal. And this is what it looks like once everything is done. So uh, be patient. The work is being done right now. The current, um, the current work is being done on Bell Size. They finished Fallbrook, Colchester, Holly and Applewood. They are now on Bell Size and going on Eaton, then going on Netherwood East. In other words, from Bell Size looping back Netherwood East all the way to, excuse me, Fleet Road. Um, they will work until the two week construction holiday of July eighteenth to July thirty-first and then resume work afterwards. Um, and there is an onsite supervisor who is very attuned to the residents' needs, i.e. sprinkler heads, uh, pool, uh, um, discharge tubes, um, our, our, our street lamps, lightings and things like that. So our Public Works Chief Operations, uh, I myself and, and Eve Mayette, the director, have been in regular contact with the supervisor Jonathan, who's been very well involved and very present to make sure everything runs smoothly. Um, concerning water, uh, we had a recent vehicle replacement. One of our old water trucks, this big behemoth of a, of a green water truck has been replaced. It is now with a very energy efficient and highly advanced uh, water uh, truck with a lot of uh, inside amenities, uh, in, integrated toolboxes and shelving and stuff. And it is a greener type of vehicle and that recently got delivered. Uh, later on in today's agenda, we will be approving uh, a resolution for the, um, the warning contract to a company to remove uh, fifty stumps uh, that are scattered throughout the town. Uh, and they will resaw it. So they basically mulch out your existing stump and they will resaw it if there, if no tree is going back. Uh, I will tell you that thanks to Michelle Richard and reaching out to companies, we did get a very good quote. And this current company is charging us less than five hundred dollars uh, a property for the fifty stumps. So it's a good deal uh, for removal and, and sawding. So thank you for that. Um, the next item I want to talk about is uh, IT. Uh, so basically, um, we are upgrading and I know that councillor Buttoning will talk about certain items, but we are in the midst of upgrading our new platform for the tennis users. Right now it is on beta mode internally that we can, uh, employees can use to, to schedule tennis reservations. But mid-July, uh, the goal is to have it running up and, and online so people can actually uh, themselves go online and book um, uh, tennis uh, court time. Thank you. Court time. Um, the um, and that would be integrated with the, with the My Hampstead platform as well. We are looking to replace the Code Red system with a newer system. It'll be also on the My Hampstead. And unfortunately, due to some technical difficulties, we were scheduled to have the new website up and running by the beginning of June, but we are a few weeks behind. But uh, um, rest assured and, and keep yourself patient. It's going to be a great website with a great platform and there'll be a lot of initiatives and smart initiatives. Um, I, uh, that's it for my report. I would just like to remind everyone and I'll be doing it this meeting and next meeting. Um, we have the Hampstead Blood Drive, the fifteenth annual Hampstead Blood Drive, which I started fifteen years ago in honor of my son. Um, again, due to COVID, it will be by appointment only. So I urge everyone to go to the Hema Convention website and you will be able to uh, um, reserve a space. They've actually increased the number, the time. So rather than running from one to eight o'clock, around one to eight P M, which we normally do, they're running from ten A M to eight P M. So it's going to be a long time and we'll be able to get as many donors as possible. So again, I did this to save my son's life twenty-five years ago. I'm asking everyone to come out and give blood and save a life. And um, I will end on speaking of lives. Uh, my heartfelt uh, sympathies and uh, and, and thoughts are with the families of Surfside. May those hundred and twenty souls be found and, and put to rest and let the families be put at rest. And last but not least, uh, thank you. And last but not least, we've been hearing more and more about the Indigenous uh, First Nations people and the discovery of these uh, graves, unmarked graves and discovery of these students and the discovery. And I will reiterate that this is not a discovery because no one knew about it. So this is a recovery of all these lost lives. So they are now going to be recovered and be remembered. It's not just happenstance discovery because they were known about and they were, uh, people knew about them and now we're discovering them and recovering them. So again, my sympathy and my hearts go out to the First Nations all across Canada. Thank you very much.
Thank you, uh, councillor Buttoning.
Yeah, uh, just to pick up where councillor Goldwax left off quickly with IT. Um, not, not much to add except for the fact that we encourage residents to continue following us on social media, uh, Twitter and Facebook specifically, we put out information on what's happening in the town and any relevant information related to town events and so forth. Uh, when it comes to the website, as councillor Goldwax mentioned, hopefully uh, will be up and running in the near future. But residents can still uh, create a, a, a account on the my.hampstead portal. Uh, some new initiatives in addition to tennis and pool booking, which will be up shortly. Uh, some other stuff that's coming down the pipeline is also uh, dog and parking permits renewals in advance where it will let you know, uh, I believe it's seven days in advance and you can automatically renew your permit. And uh, all residents of Hampstead are entitled to create a My Hampstead account, uh, even those on Coates and Luke Road because you are residents and we care about you. Um, other than that, uh, from the pool perspective, uh, the pool is open and running. Uh, thank you to the lifeguards who are making sure that everything is going safe and uh, working in a systematic and uh, you know, procedurally correct manner. It's always, uh, always difficult in the summer, especially when day camp is there and so forth. So we really rely on them to provide a safe environment and a great opportunity to relax and get some cool water and chill the family out. Uh, also, Gaten Park has a splash pad which we encourage residents to use as well. Uh, with regards to uh, urban planning, quickly, there were sixty-eight permits issued this past month for a value of two million and change. Uh, thirty thousand dollars in permit fees were collected and year to date, a hundred and ninety-six permits were issued with a value of work at nine point five million dollars, which realistically is a lot less than what residents have actually put into their properties. So it's just a theme where we continue to invest in our, in our community, our residents are. Uh, valued permits, a year to date, we've collected a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in permit fees. Whereas in twenty twenty, at this point, we collected seventy-two thousand. So still big improvements there. A hundred and five inspections were done this month. Two infractions were issued uh, relative to thirty-six inspections done last year at this time. So a great job to the urban planning department. And lastly, from a youth perspective, I just want to encourage everybody to go out and get your second vaccine. Uh, there's plenty of opportunity. There's plenty of, plenty of clinics that are available and uh, one dose is not enough. Make sure no matter how old you are, if you're eligible, go get your vaccine. Thank you. And if we don't speak to everybody, uh, happy uh, construction holiday. If you're taking off time, travel safe, be well and go HABs go.
Thank you. And councillor Schaefer. Are you muted?
I am muted.
Last but not least, firstly, I should point out the last comment of councillor Buttoning. I happened to be at Decary Square and even if you didn't have an appointment, you were able to walk in and get your second dose or your first dose as the case may be. So since Decary Square would be the center for the majority of Hampstead residents, if you, if you're looking to get uh, a early appointment for your, for your vaccine, uh, even if you don't have an appointment, you can go there and they'll take you because there are very few people at Decary Square at six o'clock today. Now, uh, I, my portfolio consists of public security as well as legal. I want to thank Major Pierre Tap for his report of the town clerk for the month of June two twenty, two thousand twenty-one and it'll read as follows. During this period, we had one regular assembly of the municipal council on June seventh and also two special council meeting on June twenty-one and June twenty-eight. All the meetings were held virtually. Most of the clerk's work was done from his home office except for a few days which took place at town hall. As president of the elections, the clerk had to respond to many questions from citizens regarding the upcoming election in November twenty twenty-one and that we have up to now seven people who have expressed their interest in standing as a candidate in the said elections. In this regard, we have studied the new regulations received June twenty-eighth relating to the holding of municipal elections in this special period of the pandemic, specifically about voting by correspondence. Rules may change anytime from now on because of the pandemic. The whole question of elections requires a greater organization, but as Major Tap says, we will be ready. We kept having exchanges with the clerks of other cities regarding the organization of these elections. We followed the development of government guidelines on the coronavirus crisis daily. We worked on a modification of the zoning law, law ten oh one, and the process will state soon for the, will start soon for the public consultation on the subject. The town clerk was always available to respond to requests from various services of the municipality, whether by email, web conference or direct calls. We had meetings on many subjects this month, including elections, towns, website, access to documents of the town, human resource topics, zoning, grass sale and minor derogations. More particularly, we've been in daily contact with the head of many of our departments to receive the various, to resolve, I should say, excuse me, the various situations requiring our expertise on a day-to-day basis. We work in collaboration on the development of the agenda for all June's council meeting and as follow. Thank you very much, uh, Major Tap for a very well-informed report. I'm now going to turn to the report of public security prepared by Lieutenant Brett Roberts and I thank him as well. Uh, firstly, uh, he wants me to indicate that there was during the month of June, uh, excuse me, May, there was a hundred and, it's June. It's June states, a hundred and seventy-six calls to public security. Uh, food patrol, bike patrols are being prepared for summer deployment. Now, for the administration, the COVID nineteen situation is still ongoing. However, the outlook for positive change can be felt among members of the team and residents. The public security team continues to adapt well to the ever-changing provincial COVID restrictions. The team is preparing themselves for the spring summer period, which will include a bike patrol. Increased public security presence during the Shavuot and the ten days that followed due to anti-Semitic acts and online postings, protests, et cetera. We have increased our presence to reassure residents. We have ensured increased presence in front of religious institutions as well as in the parks. Apart from the one pocket knife being shown incident, we had nothing that occurred in Hampstead. Overtime increased significantly due to the added presence caused by demonstrations and anti-Semitic social media posts. Department overtime total for the year now totals two hundred and ninety-eight point twenty-five hours. But I've said in the past, I'll repeat. A life is very important and we'd rather spend more money on public security if we have to, even on overtime, to secure the well-being of all our residents. Between May sixteen and June ninth, twenty twenty-one, Hampstead constables went to court for a total of seven cases, resulting in three guilty verdicts and four postponements. Training of employees continued with five public security team members taking pepper spray and pressure point course on June five, twenty twenty-one at the community center. Five public security team members also completed a three-day course for child car seat installation that we will soon be able to provide such a service to our residents. The course included two days of theory with the third day being a practical clinic in the town hall parking lot. The clinic was fully booked and a big success, hopefully the first of many for our residents. Two public security team members have begun training to become first aid CPR and AED defibrillator, defibrillator instructors with the Heart and Stroke Foundation. This process will continue through the summer with goal of having our own P S members qualified to instruct their fellow Hampstead employees. Now, uh, I'm not going to go through all the very. Now, uh I'm not going to go through all the very many uh uh areas or the nature of the calls that public security uh attended to during the month, but I will give you some statistics. In the month of June, there were one hundred and ninety six parking tickets issued. Bylaw tickets amounted to nine, construction tickets, seven, like one dog ticket. And that total uh arrives at the number that I I read to you earlier. In other statistics, um there were no thefts of vehicles. Um. There was one theft of a vehicle, but no theft in a vehicle. Uh breaking and entering, there was only one, and that is the total. So thank you very much for this report. And I want to thank once again Lieutenant Brent Roberts for a very well uh prepared report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and uh we'll get on to the rest of the agenda.
Harvey, when they did the car seat thing, were there like baby volunteers necessary for the car seat thing?
No.
No? No babies?
Yeah, on the subject of crime in Hampstead, which is very, very low this year uh due to COVID, uh due to the curfew and so on. But the curfew is over, COVID is ending, thankfully. Uh crime is going to go up. So if people become lax about putting on their alarms or about locking their doors and so on, um it's not a good idea.
Can I just, Harvey, just want to say one thing? Door openers, people should not leave their garage door openers in their consoles on cars left on the driveway or on their visors. Please remove your garage door openers. And this is a common occurrence every spring and summer and early fall.
Yep, and people leave their car doors unlocked as well.
Well, hopefully, people who do breaking and entry will continue to do it from home, will work from home.
Okay, guys. All right. Five point oh, adoption of the minutes of the regular council meetings held on June seventh, special council meetings held on June twenty first and June twenty eighth. On motion of councillor. I'm sorry.
Schaefer and Goldwax.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor Goldwax. It is resolved that the minutes of the regular council meeting held on June seventh twenty twenty one and the special council meetings held on June twenty first and twenty eighth twenty twenty one are hereby approved as submitted. Anyone opposed? No. So that brings us to almost there. A lot of minutes.
Seven point one, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
There's no six, there's no six.
No six, just seven, just have to scroll through all these minutes. We've been doing a lot of stuff in the month of June. Seven point one is a notice of motion. Notice of motion was given by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. Um that draft by law number one thousand one dash nine entitled by law modifying zoning by law number one thousand one will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a copy of draft by law number one thousand one dash nine and a motion to dispense with the reading of said by law draft by law is made. That brings us to seven point two, which is the first adoption of the first draft, the first draft of this by law. It was proposed by councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax and resolved to approve the first draft of by law number one thousand one dash nine entitled by law modifying zoning by law number one thousand one. Anyone opposed? Okay, it's adopted. I will mention that this is a very important set of amendments. Uh we've been having numerous minor exemptions for things that the council has decided as well as the Plenian Architectural Committee that um we should loosen up our bylaws a little bit. And uh by adopting this, uh it will make it easier for residents to do things without having to pay for minor exemption without the P A C and council having to deal with all these minor exemptions.
Sorry, so just to just to just to explain a little further, it has to do with accessory items on your lawn, what you call your front lawn, your side lawn and your front uh your front side lawn for corner lots concerning cab cabanas, uh pool equipment, uh heat pump equipment and stuff like that. Yeah, and sheds, yeah, cabins, cabanas, yeah. Who's letting in over?
Yeah, all of that, and we're referring to the secondary front yard for people that have corner lots. And there's more stuff as well. Uh there is hydro wire restrictions that we had that are more severe than Hydro Quebec has. So we're getting rid of that. No other town had those things. We're cleaning up a lot of little things. Okay, um. Uh now they notice a motion, uh notice of motion was given by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax. That draft by law number seven oh five dash twelve entitled by law modifying by law number seven oh five dash eleven concerning the collection, removal and disposal of waste material will be submitted to council for adoption. All council members have received a copy of draft by law number seven oh five dash twelve and a motion to dispense with the reading of said by law was made, which brings us to seven point four, which is the adoption of the first draft. Uh actually, the adoption of that by law. And uh on motion of councillor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, seconded by councillor.
Budning.
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 I'm sorry?
Budning.
Budning, okay. Uh second by councillor Budning is resolved to approve draft by law number seven oh five dash twelve entitled by law modifying by law number seven oh five dash eleven concerning the collection, removal and disposal of waste material. Anyone opposed?
Yeah, but do you want to explain it?
I'm embarrassed to explain it, but you go ahead and explain it.
Uh well, it it just basically gives a tenant the right to, I mean, it's kind of obvious, it should be, but it gives a tenant the right to receive and use our um garbage recycling and uh and composting bins uh despite the position of the landlord. So landlord will not have the right to um to uh to 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 stop a tenant from using our bins or the bins that we give to them. And believe it or not, we had people doing that at least once.
That's why I was embarrassed.
It's to prevent the landlord from exercising control over our bins.
Yep, and this is the first time in sixteen years that we've had this problem. So anyway, this will resolve the problem. Okay, I will announce each member of council having received a copy of the town clerk deposits the complete minutes of the regular planning advisory committee meeting held on June fifteen twenty twenty one and the special meeting held on June twenty ninth twenty twenty one. The council takes note of the deposit of said minutes by the town clerk. And that will bring us to the first of our many, many uh urban planning items. And the first.
Can I just make one statement before we go ahead on this? Really, month after month, I've been seeing huge volume of urban planning stuff. And it's really hats off to the urban planning department and hats off to the PAC guys. They sit there, they go through every single file diligently, and it's a hell of a lot of work. And and just really, the the town really owes them a debt of gratitude, a huge debt of gratitude.
I agree. Very well stated, Jack.
Yes, and I certainly agree, um because I sit on those meetings. And yes, it is a lot of work. And as you noticed, we just uh had minutes adopted for a special P A C meeting. We simply can't do everything in just one three hour meeting. So this month, we had six hours worth of discussions, more than six, and it's not the first time we've done it. But the by law, what I referred to earlier, is going to simplify things and reduce the volume. It will also allow us on the P A C to spend more time on the important projects and not spend so much time on things that uh really uh will deal with with this by law change. Okay, so the first one, one seventy eight uh Wexford. It's uh four minor exemptions. And uh there was an intervention um by a resident um who is opposed to granting these minor exemptions. The council spent considerable time in caucus before this meeting discussing this. And ultimately, we have come to a conclusion. So um on, here it is, on motion of councillor.
Etteri.
Etteri, seconded by councillor Budning. It is resolved uh that the request for four minor exemptions to zoning by law number one thousand and one dash two for the property located one seventy eight Wexford, lot number two oh eight nine two two zero zone R A two is approved. Um anyone opposed? Okay, so that's adopted. Eight point three is also one seventy eight Wexford, but these are minor exemptions, this is the project itself. It was proposed by councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor Alfasi. Um, okay, that the request authorized an addition for a detached single family dwelling located at one seventy eight Wexford and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on June fifteen twenty twenty one is deferred as recommended by the P A C. The proposed project does not meet the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number one thousand and one dash two and meets the prescribed standards of the same playing and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? So that's adopted. So in other words, we've approved the minor derogations. We're not ready to approve the project itself yet. Eight point four, eleven Heath. On motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, I think. Um after request authorized the construction of a D is resolved that the request authorized the construction of a detached single family dwelling located eleven Heath and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on June fifteen twenty twenty one is conditionally approved as recommended by the P A C, provided that the proposed Irish graph Cambridge Masonry is not acceptable and must be replaced by natural stone, uh which will be approved, which must be approved by the urban planning department. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number one thousand and one dash two and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the same playing and architectural integration program by law number seven seven five. Anyone opposed? That's adopted and brings us to eight point five concerning fifty six forty two Queen Mary. It is proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor Budning. And resolve that in this particular case, the request to waive the minor exemption request fees for four conditionally approved minor exemptions upon resolution twenty twenty one dash two four two and adopted by council on Monday, June twenty eight, twenty twenty one for a detached single family dwelling located at fifty six forty two uh Queen Mary Road, lot number two oh eight nine four six eight zone R A one is approved as recommended by the P A C. So we are simply waiving the fees for these minor exemptions. Uh anyone opposed? No, okay. Eight point six, forty six forty eight Aldred. Um on motion of councillor.
Budning.
Budning, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Uh second by councillor Goldwax, that the request for two minor exemptions is only by law number one thousand and one dash two for the property located forty six forty eight Aldred, lot number two oh eight nine one six four zone R B four is approved. Uh I'll mention that there were no um interested parties who commented on this one or for that matter, on any of the other minor exemption uh items that we have today. The only one was the very first one, one seventy eight Wexford. All the others had no comments. Okay, anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Brings us to eight point seven nineteen Gaten. Okay, nineteen Gaten. Uh right. Um. Councillors can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we're not planning to approve this one. I got that right?
Can you remind me of what this is? I don't remember.
It's the driveway, the thirty, the thirty foot wide driveway.
Right.
Um, okay.
I think we wanted to take a vote on that.
Oh, well.
You're talking about, you're talking about eight, eight point seven nineteen Gaten? Yes.
All right, what I'll do is I'll read, I'll read this as approved, but we can vote on it and see whether people are in favor or not. Okay, it was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Are you reading it as approved or not approved?
As approved.
So Goldwax.
Okay, it's seconded by councillor. Well, if there isn't a secondary, then it's not approved. That's the end of it. Okay, there's no secondary, um so it's automatically not approved. Uh Pierre, I trust I'm right on that. Okay, well, he's muted, but also.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, you're right on that.
Okay, so we don't have a secondary, obviously. If there was a vote, it would have been against it, so.
So so sorry, Mr. Mayor, for 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 um since we do provide services to our to our residents, uh since it was not approved, it was a notice of motion and a resolution that was not approved. Um and there was no secondary. So at least can urban planning go back to the owner and not just say no, but can we at least try and come up with a compromise? And then maybe something comparable, ah sorry, compromise, compromise for council or come back to council rather than just saying categorically no?
Well, uh okay, the the answer to your question is yes. So my interpretation at any rate is, yes, it should go back to um our head of urban planning, Mario should speak to the owner, explain what the problem was, why the councillors were opposed to it and suggest some alternatives. And I do believe there are some alternatives that could be done. Um.
If we do this, the furl, doesn't that save the guy from having to pay the fee a second time? So maybe we should pass this as a deferral and then send it back to PAC so that the guy doesn't have to pay a second fee if they can come to some kind of conclusion.
Well, except that it in a sense, it hasn't even come here. We haven't refused it. It just hasn't come. There was nobody seconding.
Therefore, there won't be a second fee right now.
Yeah, there's no second.
It hasn't been presented.
Pierre, is that the case?
Yeah, that's the case. The uh motion was not presented officially because to present it, you need to have someone to second it. So for tonight, the motion is rejected because you don't have, but it's not a uh.
So it's not rejected?
Not a resolution rejecting, it's just that I rejected because it's not presented.
Yeah, it's not rejected, it just never, never came.
Officially, this resolution doesn't exist. So technically, there's two way. Uh in some town, I remember, I just put, I just not even put anything on the uh uh about the notice that doesn't exist. Uh officially, it's presented, but as no one's agained, this motion never exists legally speaking.
Okay, but anyway, regardless.
In other words, it's still on the table, it hasn't been rejected, it just doesn't exist for tonight.
Hasn't.
Doesn't exist for tonight, that's it.
Correct.
No, but obviously, the view of council is clear. So the uh owner can go back and speak to Mario Urban Planning and hopefully find something that perhaps will be accepted by the council. Okay, um fifty nine. Okay, fifty nine Holtham, uh another minor exemption, it was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Budning.
Uh and resolve that the request for minor exemptions is zoning by law number one thousand one dash two for the property located fifty nine Holtham, lot number two oh nine oh zero four six zone R A two is approved. Uh anyone opposed? Okay.
Lauren, could you just, could you just actually say why we're doing this as opposed to not the other one?
Yeah, so, yeah, so so the other one was was requesting the uh the connection of the front walkway to their driveway, which would give them a thirty foot frontage. And over forty percent of the frontage of the property would be concrete or pavers. Uh this situation falls under the same category. However, what they're doing is they're literally taking out and they're taking out the old stones and putting down new ones. They're just redoing what's currently existing. However, since it's not conforming from when it was initially built, uh if they take up the pavers, then they would have to make their driveway essentially smaller to conform. So we're legalizing essentially an existing situation, whereas the previous one was we were permitting a situation that's against the by law to exist moving forward.
Right, thank you.
It should also be noted that if they, if this per, if this uh request was to. It should also be noted that if they, if this, if this request was to conform, the width of their current driveway is exactly, I believe, the width of the garage door, which means that they would have a garage door opening onto grass if we were to reject this.
Yeah. Okay. 181 Finchley, another minor exemption, it was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax seconded by councillor. Shafer. And resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located 181 Finchley, lot number 2089028, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed? That's adopted.
Just, just for the record, this also falls into the exact same situation. But what this is, is they have a walkway that's coming down with a one-meter strip of grass, which they're keeping, I believe, and then they have a one-car driveway, the width of one car going straight down into the garage door, which is a one-car garage door. So they're just extending the driveway, I believe it's four feet to the right, just to give them a little bit more space to park an extra car. But it's essentially the width of one car length, one car width currently. So we're, we're trying to be as realistic and accommodating as possible, but avoiding situations where you have 30 or 35 feet of just pavers frontage of the property.
Okay, thank you. 8.10. Concerning 5654 Queen Mary. It was proposed by councillor.
Budning.
Seconded by councillor Shafer and resolved that the request for minor exemptions to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located 5654 Queen Mary, lot number 2089559, zone RA1 is approved. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted. Brings us to 8.11, 190 Netherwood. On motion of councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax seconded by councillor.
Shafer.
Shafer. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modification, facades modification for detached single-family dwelling located 190 Netherwood and submitted to the planning advisory committee meeting on June 15, 2021 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC provided that the brick should be painted white and the specifications of the proposed paint on the masonry should be submitted by the architect and verified by the urban planning staff. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning by law number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the site planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted and I'll mention that the council and caucus to discuss painting bricks. Apparently, there are some types of paint treatments that are very long-lasting and work very well and we will insist on one of those types of treatments. Just taking ordinary paint and putting it on bricks is just not going to work. Okay, brings us to 8.12, 5719 Queen Mary. It was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Shafer. Seconded by councillor Shafer and resolved that the request for a minor exemption to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located at 5719 Queen Mary, lot number 2089045, zone RA1 is approved and the request fees are waived in this specific case. Anyone opposed?
No.
That's adopted. Brings us to 8.13. 440 Duffin. Or minor exemptions, it was proposed by councillor.
Budning.
Budning. Seconded by councillor Shafer and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located 440 Duffin, lot number 2088566, zone RB6 is approved. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Brings us to 8.14, 5666 Queen Mary. It was proposed by councillor.
Budning.
Budning seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Okay. We didn't, we didn't discuss this one on caucus, I'm going to be reading this as approved. So.
But it, it's not approved, it's a defer.
It's deferred.
I know, that's what it says. I'm going to read it as approved, we didn't have time to discuss it in caucus.
Why are you reading it as, why are you reading it as approved though?
Can we discuss it now?
Wait, but hold on, why are you reading it as approved? Unilaterally.
How about, okay, fine, we can, we can discuss it, but these things should be discussed in a private caucus meeting, not in public. We can't just step out. So I don't know.
Why are you, why is the resolution changing?
Was the decision warned to defer this?
The last we had a meeting was last week and they were going to create a special work session with the resident to come to a compromise or a solution.
So then.
And I have no idea what came out of that. So then.
I, I believe they were going to, I believe it was to be deferred where the architects were supposed to come back with some renditions and then if there wasn't, there was an impasse, there would be a special meeting, if I'm not mistaken. Or it could have been the opposite, I'm not sure what they, what they resolved upon, but why is the resolution changing?
Okay, I hope we do this. I presume everyone can use their iPads and get back into our caucus meeting. Right?
Actually, my iPad broke. Sorry. I can, I can get on a call with somebody.
Yeah, Jack, I can call you.
But Bill, what's the issue? I mean, what's the general issue with this one?
Generally.
Specifics.
I can't describe that, we have to talk in our caucus meeting and then we will talk, we'll decide what we want to do.
Can I just understand the resolution as proposed by the PAC is to defer the items?
Exactly.
So why aren't we just deferring it?
Exactly.
We don't always agree with the resolution of the PAC. So I'm suggesting we meet in caucus, we recess this meeting, we meet in caucus, it'll take five minutes and then we'll come back afterward, I know how to read this resolution. Okay?
Is, is there anything secret about this, so we can't just mention it in public?
We just don't do that in public, we always step out and do it in caucus. Okay?
Okay, well, I don't care either way.
Okay, so we will, we're recessing the meeting right now, it's 9:30, we're recessing for hopefully not very long and, and the councillors will meet in caucus and then we will come back over here.
Michael, can you just call me and put me on speakerphone?
But I'm wondering, Terry, are you still watching?
Yes, so Mr. Sun will have to call you in. So, Mr. Sun, you will have to invite everyone in the call.
No, I know, I know, I can get back in the caucus, but do I have to leave the council meeting?
No, so, Mr. Mayor, if you're running two different devices, you can basically mute yourself out, leave your camera on, use your other device and open up the link for the caucus meeting on your other device.
Yes, you're absolutely right.
And I'll make sure that everyone is on mute.
Yeah. And, and I will, I will, I'm going to leave this meeting open, I'm muting myself out, I'm joining into the, on the link for the caucus.
Okay, and I'll.
Yeah. You might want to kill cameras also because it's going to double your bandwidth on.
Yeah, I'll do that. Terry, let's see.
We want to live.
Okay.
I can't connect, but if you keep it, I.
Yeah.
Okay, we're still live. I'm back. Counselor Edery, Schaefer, El Fassi, Buttoning. Um, are we missing Counselor Goldwax?
I'm here.
He's here. Okay, we're all back and recess is over. Time to get back to work. So we're going to be reading this resolution as approved. So it was proposed by Counselor.
Edery.
Edery, seconded by Counselor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, and resolved that the request to authorize an addition on the rear yard and façades modifications for detaching of family dwelling located at 5666 Queen Mary and submitted to the Planning Advisory Committee meeting on June 29, 2021 is approved, notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to defer. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and only partially meets the prescribed standards of the same planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? Okay, then that's adopted and I'm presuming that our town clerk has made a note that this one is approved, notwithstanding the PAC.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and just to give you a precision about the resolution before that there were no, no one to second. It, the, the item will not be on the resume of the evening because there's no, there's no vote. Because to have a vote, we need to have someone.
Okay, so I'll second it, Pierre. I will second it.
No, no, Harvey, Harvey, he's talking about the.
We're talking about previous resolution.
Oh, okay. Yeah, the one about the.
Oh, yes, I understand. You're talking about 19 Gaten.
Yeah, there will be no resolution, nothing to sign because officially this resolution was not, there were no votes. So no vote on this resolution. So there will be, this item doesn't exist for the, the knowledge of the council for tonight.
Okay, and as for 814, we're approving it, notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC. And now we're on 815, um, which is 30 Merton, 30 Merton Crescent, on motion of Counselor. Counselor.
Buttoning, sorry.
Buttoning, seconded by Counselor Goldwax. It is resolved that the request authorized facade modification for a detached single-family dwelling located at 30 Merton Crescent and submitted to the Planning Advisory Committee meeting on June 29, 2021 is approved as recommended by the PAC. The proposed project meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the same planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed? No, that's adopted. And that brings us to 8.16, 26 Ellerdale. It was proposed by Counselor.
Buttoning.
Schaefer. Seconded by Counselor Schaefer. That the request for two minor exemptions, only by law number 1001-2 for the property located 26 Ellerdale, law number 2089101. Um, zone RA1 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that a minimum distance of 0.6 meters must be left between the boundary line on Finchley Road and the proposed fence in order to allow space for cedar hedge on private land. A cedar hedge must be installed in front of the proposed fence. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Um, brings us to 8.17. Um, 5801 Ferncroft. It was proposed by Counselor.
Goldwax.
Buttoning, seconded by Counselor Goldwax, and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions is only by law number 1001-2 for the property located at 5801 Ferncroft. Law number 2089244, zone RA2 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that a strip of grass of natural plant or plant material of 0.6 meters must be left between the driveway and the walkway from the city sidewalk up to 0.9 meters to the concrete stairs. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. 8.18, 39 Holly. Um, it was proposed by Counselor.
Buttoning.
Buttoning, seconded by Counselor Goldwax, and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions to zoning by law number 1001-2 for the property located at 39 Holly. Lot number 2089686, zone RA2 is conditionally approved as recommended by the PAC, provided that the fence and the patio are not too close to the sidewalk and that a minimum distance of 3.8 meters, 12.5 feet must be left between the street boundary line and the fence. Anyone opposed? That's adopted. Brings us to 8.19, which is 91 Stratford. Okay. And I believe caucus meeting, we decided we are deferring this. Am I correct?
Which one was this again?
91 Stratford, the.
Yes, that was the decision.
Okay, so.
Jack, if you recall, the independent expert.
Okay, right, right.
Okay, so I'm going to read this as being deferred. It was proposed by Counselor.
Edery.
Edery, seconded by Counselor.
Schaefer.
Schaefer, and resolved that the request for two minor exemptions is only by law number 1001-2 for the property located 91 Stratford, lot number 2088943. Zone RA1 is, is deferred as, notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC, which was to conditionally approve, but we are deferring it. The council wants more information. Anyone opposed? Okay, nobody opposed.
Leon is mute. I think he has something to say.
Yes, yes, yes. Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I was muted. Thank you, Jack. I do oppose. You have, you have a committee in a town, the only recognized legalized committee, the PAC, Planning Advisory Committee. The Planning Advisory Committee recommends to conditionally approve a project that's been on our desks for the last year and a half. I'm not grandstanding here and the residents are not on the call. I'm doing this for, to be fair to the residents, to our resident that are waiting a year and a half. So after so many meetings back and forth, right? The PAC finally gives a conditional approve. And now you decide, which I'm, I'm for, you decide to go and seek professional advice from outside consultants about such constructions or the depth of the construction. I'm actually for going out and seeking more information. But it's not right and it's not fair to a resident that has been sitting and waiting to build his dream house in Hampstead and back and forth with our town. And finally, the committee approves the project, conditionally approved. And now the council decide, oh, wait, 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 wait. Now we're going to go and seek some more information. Let's delay this guy for another six or eight months until you get your information that you want to get. Does that make sense to you, Mr. Mayor? Or dear co-counselors?
If you're asking me, I don't think, it won't take any six to eight months.
Exactly. Counselor Edery, you said six or eight months, but there's no basis for your statement because we never mentioned six to eight months. We stated at our meeting that we would retain an expert forthwith, to which you agreed. Also, what we heard.
How long is it going to take?
One second, I allow you to speak. Please allow me a couple of minutes. In addition, it's not a year and a half that this, this, the, the issue that we're hiring a, an independent expert, from what I was told, and we're talking about a period of maybe five months at the most. So it's not a year and a half. We've got it. Let's, let's deal with the facts as they are.
Sorry, the fact, five months?
That's the, the issue about the extended, the extended basement is a new issue and that apparently was only, has only arisen in the past five months. That's the only issue why we're talking about. That's the issue we're talking about.
And how long it's going to take, Harvey, to, for this outside consultant? How long you think it's going to take?
Well, let's, let's, let's.
Hold on, give me an answer.
Someone, I am not, I am not a consultant.
So you don't see?
I'm relying upon, I'm relying upon the information that was told to us in, at our private meeting.
That was not told to us any timeframe because.
No, that's true. But it was told that we should have an expert.
At the last minute. This came at the last minute.
We should have an expert and you agree to it.
Look, guys, you voted for it. You have the majority. Good luck to you, but you don't serving your resident. It's not fair.
You've got to do what's in the interest of Hampstead.
It's not, you have a PAC that conditionally approved the project. So finally, that you have a PAC conditionally approved, now you stop it. That doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
When we're making decisions of this magnitude, there's, there's many other factors that are at play. You're setting a precedent essentially and you open the floodgate. So it's only, it's only fair for the council to do their due diligence before approving something that could change the scope of construction in Hampstead moving forward. And to be fair to the council, I believe this is the first time that they've seen this project. You're aware of the project. I'm aware of the project.
I don't want to say that. I don't want to say the address, but you know very well, Warren. Yeah. In, in not far from where you grew up, I don't want to see more. There is the same, same depth and huge construction underground. So we've seen it before. It's not new to us. It's not new to us. I've been there.
It's the, it's the, it's the exemption requests from the zoning for underground construction. That, the depth is one thing, but it's the exemption request that's new. So I think it's only fair if the council wants to do their due diligence before making decisions.
I don't have a problem.
Guys, in the interest of moving along, for 8.19, we are deferring this with Counselor El Fassi dissenting. Um, so, so Pierre is, I'm sure, taking notice.
Noted, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, 8.20, also 91 Stratford. This time it's about the project itself. But since we've deferred the minor exemptions, we almost have to defer the project. Um, so on motion of Counselor.
Edery.
Edery, seconded by Counselor.
El Fassi.
El Fassi.
Sorry.
Uh, it is resolved that the request to authorize the construction of a detached single-family dwelling located 91 Stratford and submitted to the Planning Advisory Committee meeting on June 29, 2021 is deferred as, notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC.
Okay, hold on a sec, Bill. Leon, are you sure you want to second this?
Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I was, I, please, start again because I don't want to second this.
Yeah, you don't want to second this motion.
So on motion of Counselor Edery, seconded by Counselor.
Uh, Buttoning.
Buttoning. It is resolved that the request to authorize the construction of a detached single-family dwelling located 91 Stratford is submitted to the Planning Advisory Committee meeting on June 29, 2021 is deferred, notwithstanding the recommendation of the PAC to approve. The proposed project only partially meets the prescribed standards of the zoning bylaw number 1001-2 and meets the prescribed standards of the same planning and architectural integration program by law number 775. Anyone opposed?
Yes, I oppose.
Okay, so that's passed. It's deferred. It's passed with Counselor El Fassi dissenting. Okay, moving on, we come to the resolution that was added to the agenda. It's 8.8.21. I have it in front of me.
Um. Just let the record stand, let the record stand that I'm abstaining from voting because it's a relative of mine.
Okay, so Counselor Buttoning is abstaining. Um, okay, it was proposed by Counselor.
Edery.
Edery, seconded by Counselor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, and resolved that the request for a minor exemption is only by law number 1001-2 for the property located at 240 Dufferin, lot number 2088603. Zone RA1 is approved. Um, anyone opposed? That's adopted. And that brings us to the end of the urban planning items and, well, I haven't counted to 100% certainty. I believe that the vast majority of the items, the minor exemptions, at any rate, that we approved tonight are all things that are being addressed in our bylaw amendments that we also approved the first draft of. So it'll greatly reduce the number of things that come in front of the PAC and the council and save residents money because they have to pay for each minor exemption. So moving on, we're at 9.1. Approval dispersments for the month of June, on motion of Counselor.
Edery.
Edery, seconded by Counselor Schaefer. It is resolved that dispersments for the period from May 16, 2021 to June 15, 2021, the total amount of $7,316,038.49 are hereby approved. Anyone opposed? No, nobody opposed.
Just for clarification purposes, 5.68 million of that is Montreal agglomeration as one of our two fees.
Yep, I was about to say that, but right, exactly. 9.2 in accordance with section 474.1 of the Cities and Towns Act, the towns mayor, that's me. the towns mayor, that's me, hereby deposited his annual report on the municipality's financial situation for the year 2020. And we'll put that on our website so people can read it. 10.2. Sorry, 10.1, 10.1. Renewal of a contract, it was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Buttoning, seconded by councillor Goldwax. And resolve that the contract for the rental of 12-wheel trucks with drivers for the snow transportation be renewed for the first optional renewal for the winter season 2021, 2022. At the rate outlined below, it goes to Cooperative Day Transporteur du Montreal Metropolitan. It's a rental of 12-wheel trucks with drivers for snow removal for the season 2020, 2021. $98.48 per hour plus taxes. And according to the frequency and quantities of work done over the past years, the estimated expenditure is assessed at $95,000, taxes included per season. Anyone opposed? Okay, that's adopted, 10.2. Contract for the removal of stumps and re-sodding, it was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor Schaefer. And resolve that the following quotation for the following contract being is hereby approved, the whole is more amply delineated here under, goes to 9043-2089 Quebec Inc., Group DRM. Total amount of taxes is $26,702.94. Anyone opposed?
Actually, I'm opposed.
Whoops, okay. Councillor Eddy is opposed. Anybody else?
How come you're opposed, councillor Eddy?
I'll tell you why, because year after year, we spend tens of thousands of dollars on stump removal. And there's a simple way to do it with a stump grinder, which is a slow but high torque, very powerful grinder. And I brought this to count, I brought this forward a couple of years ago and I brought it again. We can do it in-house and we can do it safely in-house. And I just don't like the idea of spending tens of thousands of dollars every year on something that we can do in-house.
Yeah, I agree. I, 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 I thank you for that, councillor Eddy, and I make you a deal. We approve this and I will look with the Public Works Director. I've seen that we've used it. I've seen the stump removal equipment. It's not cumbersome. It's not big. It is just the purchasing of it and getting the training on it because it's, I know what. And we benefit because you end up with mulch that you can use.
There's two types of stump removal machines. One is a high-speed, low-torque machine, which kind of whips around and, and, and cuts up the stump and is dangerous. The other one, which I've recommended to Public Works in the past, is a very slow but high torque thing. And it just grinds it into the ground and five minutes later, you've got nothing left.
Yeah.
And it's very safe.
Have the public managers agree with this idea?
Sorry, no, we've never, they've never agreed with it. They said, hey, you know what? We're not going to have a lot of new stumps coming up. This is the last big, like two years ago, it was like, this is the last big number of stumps we're going to have. And then every year, we wind up with more stumps. It's like $20,000 of stumps. It's like, okay, you know what? Enough.
How much would the machines cost?
I don't know, somewhere probably in the 10 to 15 range.
I think it's more than that, but anyway, we'll check. So let Michael check it out. We'll go, we'll go forward.
Maybe next year we'll have it.
I do want to remind you, we looked into this whole issue in the past and our director general and Public Works did not recommend it. It is not just getting rid of the stump. It is also re-sodding, putting down and watering the grass and making sure that it survives. It is more than just getting rid of the stumps. When, and the prices have come down considerably from the first time we talked about this. So we can look into it yet again, but I know what the conclusion was last time. And I know the conclusion will be different this time. Meantime, if people have stumps and would like to get rid of them. So I will say again, is there anyone other than councillor Eddy who is opposed to this resolution? Okay, in that case, it's adopted with councillor Eddy dissenting. Okay, that brings us to 10.3, another contract. This one's a big one. It's for roads, sidewalks, lighting, infrastructures. It was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer. Seconded by councillor Schaefer. And resolve that the following quotations for the following contract being is hereby approved, the whole is more amply delineated here under, goes to Eurovia Quebec Construction Inc. Total amount with taxes and contingencies, $1,642,438.77. Anyone opposed?
No, but I would just like to share with the public, without giving too specifics, certain streets we're talking about, not all of it obviously, but part of Dufferin, Thurlow North, Martin, Stratford North, North Cove, Thurlow South and Stratford South is what was the part of the parcel that they were bidding on, which, which as the mayor talked about, which is drainage, sidewalks, trenching for lighting and repaving.
Yep, exactly. It's a lot of work, a lot of good stuff. Okay, so that's adopted. And now we have another resolution, 10.4. Authorize the director of purchasing to proceed with the sale of unused paving stones. It was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Schaefer. Seconded by councillor Schaefer. And resolve that the director of purchasing with the approval of the director general be authorized to sell the items listed below. It's a lot of 1,200 pieces of paving stones. Anyone opposed?
No, I just want to explain that is a part and parcel of what we call cleaning up the public works yard. So items that we can get rid of without disposing and throwing it out and reclaim some money. That's what's being sold. It's items that are sitting in the yard right now.
Right, exactly. Thank you. Okay, approval of a hiring list of white college student employees, it was proposed by councillor.
Eddy.
Eddy, seconded by councillor.
Goldwax.
Buttoning, I think I heard. And resolve that the town council approves the hiring of white college student employees as detailed along the list from the community services and recreation department. The hiring is subject to the usual conditions in accordance with the provisions of the collective agreement between QP Local 429 and the Town of Hampstead. Anyone opposed? It's adopted. Brings us to a resolution having to do with Hydro Quebec's grant program. It was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Buttoning.
Buttoning. And resolve that the Town of Hampstead can apply for the subsidy under the grant program for the installation of 4,500 charging stations.
Oh, sorry, it's, it's four, 500 amp charging stations, not 4,500 charging stations.
You mean 4.5?
No, we're four charging stations. I believe they're either like 500 versions or 500 amps, but it's four electric charging stations. We're not purchasing 4,500 charging stations.
Okay, I didn't think we were, but I missed, I understood it a different way. Yeah, it's certainly not worded that way, but okay.
Basket for Hampstead. You get an electric car charger now.
Okay, so we're, we're getting four charging stations, model number 500 or something like that. And the director general is authorized to sign the documents needed for this purpose. Anyone opposed? Okay, and I think I know where two of them are going. No, not outside my house. I don't have an electric car. But I think we're putting two of them along Hampstead Road near the park. I'm not sure where the other two are going yet. So finally, determined. It was proposed by councillor.
Goldwax.
Goldwax, seconded by councillor.
Second question period, Mr. Mayor.
There's a second question period, Mr. Mayor, before.
There are questions.
We don't do the determined until the second question period?
No.
No.
You're right, you're right. Okay, so we'll do the second question period. I see I have a few questions here.
There's five.
So from anonymous. Hello, I'd like to ask a question regarding the building underground in front of a home. I understand there is a potential bylaw being presented for the back, but not the front. I'm joined by three families whom, who would like to build in the front and would like some feedback. Okay. I'm not sure if we're going to be modifying our bylaws or not, but we have had some discussion on the issue. In fact, 91 Stratford that we talked about a few minutes ago, we want a more in-depth report from an outside consultant covering all kinds of issues that go along with underground basements that go beyond the setbacks underground, so you don't see them. But still, they go beyond the setbacks and that has implications, quite a number of implications. And while we've gotten a lot of information from our engineer on the planning and architectural committee, we still want to get some outside information on the various issues. Issues relate to what will grow on top of the, the part of the basement that goes into the setbacks. Will trees go there? What type of trees? Will it affect, how must it be done in such a way that it will not affect the neighboring homes? It won't drain the water table. It won't affect water going onto neighbors' property or drying up neighbors' property. The excavations going deep won't cause any landslides, things like that. There, there are quite a few things that we want to look at in more detail. There are certainly potential solutions, but there's a lot more we have to look at. And in looking at all that, we'll also be asking ourselves, what's the difference from having these basements into the setbacks on the rear versus in the front? And there's at least one difference, which is, is our town trees that we plant in the front or our water mains that are underneath a servitude in the front of people's properties, town land, but in the front. So there's all kinds of questions that have to be addressed and resolved. So we're going to get a consultant to do a detailed report addressing all those questions and probably a few more that I haven't thought of. And once we have that, we'll be in a position to decide what we want to do with underground structures that go into setbacks. And of course, how far into the setbacks is okay, would be okay and so on. Do we need setbacks for underground structures? We have setbacks for the visible part of a house. Maybe we need setbacks for the underground part. I don't know. There are a lot of issues that have to be looked into and we are going to be looking into those issues as quickly as possible because we have at least 91 Stratford that has been trying to get approval for a very long time. And we know we have other houses. The questioner is referring to the three others who want to have underground structures in the front of the house. So it's a lot to look into, but we're going to do it absolutely as soon as possible. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I just, just to clarify, I just did some quick research here just because it didn't sit well with me with the electric charger situation. So what it is, is that Hydro Quebec has partnered with Quebec municipalities offering a grant of $12,000 per charger with the objective of installing 4,500 chargers throughout the province. So what this is, is this is a request for a subsidy application from Hydro Quebec under their grant program of installing 4,500 chargers throughout the province. That's what it is.
That's what I thought it was.
So we're not installing, so we're not installing 4,500 chargers. We're also not installing four, 500 chargers. We're making an application for a grant under the initiative to install 4,500 chargers throughout the province. So I apologize that I'm corrected here.
Okay, so maybe we will have two chargers, which will on Hampstead Road, near Hampstead Park, at least for a starter. And if they prove to be very popular, we may expand on that. Okay, anonymous. On the Town of Hampstead website, the mayor has written a few notes on the filing of the latest survey results. He writes that for upzoning contained growth, 62% were in favor compared to 35% who wanted no change. Of the 62% who wanted upzoning, 24% want 10 stories, 14% more than 10 stories, 13% eight stories and 11% six stories. In other words, 61.3% of those wanting upzoning wanted 10 or more than 10 stories versus 38.7% who want six or eight stories. Please explain how you arrive at 61.3%. Okay. It's, it's simple. You take the, you add up the, let's see. You add up the 14, you add up the 14% who want, sorry, the 24% who want 10 stories with the 14% who wanted more than 10 stories. So that comes out to 38%. You then divide 38% by the 62% who wanted upzoning and that's how you get the 61.3%.
Then the simple, simple way to say it is you discount the people who wanted no change. Is that correct?
Yes, that's another way of saying exactly the same thing. Correct. Okay, next. Where are the details of the, of a potential civic center's estimated cost, including the operating cost? This is something that's going to have to wait till later. We, we had, we had a grant application, actually twice, for a recreation center, not a civic center, a recreation center. The difference is, a recreation center would simply be a replacement for the community center. A civic center would also add an extra floor and have more room for recreation stuff plus be able to absorb town hall as well. For the recreation center, two stories, the cost at the time were, I think, somewhere between 12 and 14 million. But of course, there's been inflation since then. And if we were to do it today, I'm sure it'd be considerably higher. And that's the best I can tell you about, about the, the cost of building it. We, as was mentioned earlier, undoubtedly, when a new grant comes along that we can apply for, we will apply for it and we will redo all our calculations. But right now, there is no grant that's applicable and.
Well, I'm sorry, there is. There's the federal infrastructure grant, which is generally an open grant. So we, we can apply for that. It, it, there, there, we, so what we're doing now is, is we're looking at how to apply for the federal infrastructure grant, which is a really big one that gives us the two-thirds matching money on, on our, on our own investment. So that is open. That's, that's not closed. But it's, it'll be our third time at bat to try it. But that's, that's the, that's the one we're targeting. There are other grants that we've been made aware of, but they're not applicable. This is the one that's applicable. This is the only one that's applicable for us, for a thing of this size.
Okay, and we're going to keep looking into the details because the devil lives in the details. And usually, the way it works is the federal grants are, the terms are often very generous and they seem very applicable. But you, in Quebec, it is Quebec who makes the decision and they fine tune the grants or the criteria, rather, they fine tune the criteria. And that often makes it very, very difficult for a town like Hampstead to be successful. But we've done a little research. I've spoken to some of my fellow mayors who have been successful. I've gotten some tips. And we are certainly going to follow the advice that I've gotten. And uh, we are certainly going to uh follow the advice that I've gotten and do our best to get a significant grant. Um, anyway, we, we have to see um how that's going to work out. Um, okay.
Was operating costs.
Yeah, we haven't done a detailed analysis of the operating cost because right now we're just not sure what we're going to be proposing. Uh, I've been talking about a civic center, which I do think is what makes the most sense for a variety of reasons. But until um we're ready to go back into this and figure out exactly what we need, um, it's hard to uh work out the exact operating cost, but I can tell you that um they, I mean, they're operating costs, but there are also extra revenues. When you can do a number of things which you can charge for, less for residents and non-residents, nothing at all in many cases for residents. But there are still revenues coming in. It's not just a matter of cost. And in terms of operating cost, you also have to look at the operating cost savings. Right now, we're spending awful lot of money on maintenance for both the community center and town hall. Uh, these are very old buildings and it costs a lot in maintenance to keep upkeeping them. So when you look at operating cost, you also have to remove the um, the, the reduction, the great reduction in uh, in maintenance costs. So there, there are a number of factors that have to be looked into uh in detail. Um, uh, but we're not, we're not quite there yet. I mean, no, we're just not there yet. Okay. Um, anonymous, has the town of Hampstead applied for government funding to build its civic center? Can councillor Eddy repeat the item about the application to get two-thirds of funding for a civic center? He might have answered this in his report, but I want to be clear on the issue. Thank you. Uh, well, councillor Eddy, um.
Uh, so basically.
Wait to you.
So there, there is, uh, the, the big grant in Canada is the federal infrastructure grant. That's the one that Coach Saint Luke had gotten for its civic center. It's also one they got recently for a major overhaul of one of their parks. It's the one that Montreal West just got recently. They're going to be rebuilding. I think they're in the twenty million range. Um, so these huge projects are generally done uh with federal grant money where you get two-thirds of it. So if we do a fifteen million pro, fifteen million dollar project, we could look at ten million dollars of uh grant money and five million dollars of, you know, on our own would be pretty easy to do. We still need to look at, like the mayor said, we still need to look at the question of operating costs. Uh, we had looked at uh a couple of years back, the question of doing an arena because Montreal West's arena was failing and we were like, like basically failing physically. Um, and then we looked at the operating costs and, and we thought, you know what? Even if I get the arena for free, the operating costs were somewhere in the four to five hundred thousand dollar range. So that was a, a deal breaker, even though we had people who were willing to donate money to help us to free the, the upfront capital costs. Um, so what we're doing now, I mean, we put together a group in finance um with a controller, uh, myself, the DG, and we've been talking to um various municipalities around us and they're helping us to understand how best to go about it. So when we file an application, we get a yes or a no, but we don't get feedback from the provincial government. And the provincial government, even though it's a federal grant, the provincial government is a gatekeeper. So what we're trying to do is to deal with the municipalities around us, our sister cities that have done grants that have uh succeeded. And we're looking to do a comparison between our grant proposal and theirs to see if there's anything that we're missing because we're not getting the feedback from the provincial government. Um, so this is, you know, we're, we're looking for a sniper shot. We want to do it. We want to do it right. If there's any money to be had in federal grants, we will get it. Um, and if, because we will do, uh, all I can say is we'll do our best to, to make sure that this time around um, it'll, it'll be the best shot we've got. And, and it's not new. Montreal West, I think, also had to wait till their third iteration, their third application. So it's not, uh, you know, just uh un, un, unknown or, or, or constant or new that you have to apply multiple times. Um, but so there's, there's work to be done, but hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll get it done.
Okay, um, you mentioned the hockey arena. Um, hockey arenas lose hundreds of thousands of dollars each year in operating costs. And as councillor Eddy mentioned correctly, yes, we have people who would have donated enough money so that effectively building it wouldn't have cost us a thing. Um, but when I asked them, will we cover the operating costs? Whoops.
Yeah, they said, no way. They said, ah, we're not getting close to that.
No, no, so we're not getting into that type of thing. Um, Coach Saint Luke has a wonderful aquatic center, but it costs them a fortune in operating cost each year. Uh, there are a number of reasons, but basically the indoor pool is the biggest reason. It's nice to have, but it's very, very expensive. So we're not going to put a bubble over our pool uh and make it all season for all kinds of reasons, but uh, but that's one. We won't do things that have enormous operating costs. The idea is to save money um and provide uh facilities that uh, that residents want, need, deserve in a high-quality town like Hampstead. And many of the things that I've talked about for this civic center are things that are not going to cost us a lot of money at all. Um, so hockey arena, no. Covered swimming pool, no. But all kinds of multifunction rooms, uh, mini fitness center, mini library for little kids, a gym being the biggest ticket item, um, all these things, yes. But um, a little auditorium for lectures, council meetings and what have you, yes. But uh, but there's an awful lot of value we can get without much in the way of operating costs. And that's what we're going to aim for. And yes, as councillor Eddy said quite rightly, we have to find a smarter way to try to get uh the grant money. But I am happy that Montreal West has gotten their grant because we share their hockey arena. And it's been fifty-odd years that Hampstead parents have been freezing uh when they take their kids to that hockey arena. That is going to be a thing in the past. We, we share the arena, we share our hockey team. So it's, it's very good news for us that they got that grant and they'll be building that. Um, okay, moving on, um. Next, anonymous, was there no question? Why was there no question on the recent survey that asked Hampstead residents if they or any of their family members would be looking to move into a new apartment unit on Coach Saint Luke Road if new apartment buildings were to be built? There are two examples, Glenmore and building opposite the M S B building, where upgrades and modernization is happening right now with no additional surveys. Uh, I'm not sure. Uh, the, the question is, why was there no question on the recent survey asking of Hampstead residents if they or their family members would be looking to move into a new depart? Well, we wanted a short survey with the most important questions and that simply isn't the most important question. It's an important question for developers. And um, when uh we have upzoning, which I believe everyone in council wants upzoning, the only debate is how many floors. Um, uh, the developers will have to do their analysis. They may very well use the Alters Group to help them um figure out where their market is going to come from. Uh, but that's not really a question for us. Um, and there is no question here, but it says the two examples uh uh where the buildings are being renovated rather than um, rather than being demolished. And uh, if I can presume what the question would be, I guess it's saying, well, if you can renovate buildings, why do we have to build taller buildings? Now, the answer, in my opinion, I suppose some councillors might disagree with me, but the answer, in my opinion, is this. Um, developers are much more likely to come in uh and do something if they can upzone and if they can go to ten stories, they can do something with higher quality amenities because you spread it over more units, uh, which is one of the reasons why I want ten stories. Um, at eight stories, though, they're still going to Alters Report, about forty-two percent of buildings will still be uh developed. Um, and, but at six stories are going to the Alters Report. And notwithstanding the ROI numbers that some councillors are talking about, uh, we would expect uh only three buildings, three lots to be developed, one of which is a vacant lot, which will be developed no matter what. So what motivates people to renovate uh buildings instead of uh demolishing them and building higher? Well, for a starter, we haven't zoned anything higher. So I know the people who did the uh, the building at the corner of Coach Saint Luke Road and that boy did indeed want to build higher, much higher. And they made a proposal and they gave it to the PAC and the PAC decided we didn't like this design. We said no, and so the people went back to their original plan, which was to um redo the whole building. That was their first plan. Then they wanted to build a much higher building when they heard that might be possible. Then they decided to go back to redoing it because they simply don't want to wait so long and it's taking longer and longer um for the council to uh get to the upzoning um uh decision. Uh, hopefully, this won't continue indefinitely. Um, and that's sort of the answer to the question you asked and the one you didn't ask. Okay. Uh, that brings us to anonymous, will Hampstead add recycling or compost bins to parks? We have, well, we have recycling and garbage bins um in our, in the parking lot uh beside the tennis courts. Um, but I guess you're talking about the um.
I think they mean like in, in certain places where you have a garbage bin and you have a recycle bin next to each other. It's actually a good idea.
Yeah, yeah, the um, exactly. They usually have three things, compost, recycling and garbage. And you can figure out which things go in which halls, square, round or triangular, whatever way they do it. Uh, yeah, I, I've seen that. We've all seen that. Um, yep, we can definitely look into doing that. Um, I shouldn't have no problem with that. I guess the councillors don't have a problem. But right now, I would really appreciate it if we have an awful lot of garbage bins all over the town. And it's a shame that in some of our parks and they may have two, three, four, five garbage bins. I'm talking but not Hampstead Park, which has even more. But uh residents who don't bother walking a few more steps to deposit garbage where it belongs, it's really not nice. Um, so I would hope that more residents will be responsible, at least put their garbage where it belongs. Uh, but we can go from there to uh recycling, uh, garbage and compost options. Uh, we'll look into the cost and we'll see if we can put those out. Okay, uh, that is the end of our questions. Um, unless some councillor has some other business they want to mention? Anybody?
Nope.
No, in that case, would someone please move adjournment?
Goldwax, Schaefer.
Councillor Goldwax, uh, seconded by councillor Schaefer. Anyone opposed? No, we adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you for attending. And I will second what was said by, I think, councillor Goldwax earlier. Please, if you haven't gotten one shot of the vaccine, get it. And if you haven't gotten your second shot, get it. I think actually councillor Schaefer mentioned.
Go to DeCary Square. They'll take you without an appointment.
Yeah, so please do it. I mean, my wife and I and I, maybe all the councillors, I don't know. But if not all, certainly most, all had two shots. And speaking for myself and my wife, we are very, very comfortable walking around without masks outside. Uh, we're getting together with people we know that have been fully vaccinated indoors without any concerns. Uh, a huge burden will be lifted off your shoulders. So do yourself a favor. If you want to go traveling in the future, uh, you're going to need those two shots. So whatever your motive, get the second shot, get the first shot if you don't even have the first one. Thank you very much and that's it. I guess we'll all go see how the hockey game is going.
Good night.
Good night.
Night. Good night, everybody. Good night.
Good night, everyone. Stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night, everybody. Stay safe.